Good evening. We'll begin this Westland City Council meeting, starting with pledge allegiance led by Councilman Mike Londo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilman Hersberger is absent. Excuse.
Pro Tem Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Beginning with special presentations and announcements, Kyle Mulligan.
Good evening, everybody. I have two quick announcements tonight. The first is the Westland Dog Park Survey is still live online and can be located at the cityofwestland.com website. The survey will close this week, so if you haven't filled that survey out yet, please let your voice be heard. And next Monday, February 28th, at 6 o'clock, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council will hold its first meeting of 2022. And the main topic will be the dog park, and there will be a time for citizen comments and input as well at that meeting. Again, that is right here in Westland City Hall in Community Room C, and that is Monday, February 28th at 6 o'clock. My second announcement is that last Monday on Valentine's Day, we had another American Red Cross Blood Drive event here at City Hall. Our goal is to have 24 units donated for this event, and we collected 32 units, potentially helping to save 96 different patients in hospitals. We could not have beaten this goal without the help and support of our Westland's finest, Chief Morris and Chief Jed Rusik. If you guys could join me down here, I would like to announce the winner of the Boots and Badges Blood Drive Donation Competition.
I'll bring our defending trophy from last year.
So, the donation count was Westland PD with 12 supported donations, and the donation count for the Westland Fire Department was 23 donations. So with that being said, the new champion and owner of the Blood Drive Trophy is Fire Chief Morris in the Westland Fire Department. If we can give everybody a round of applause. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Hey, you guys got a photo?
Thanks, guys.
That's here for police and fire. All right, well now move to questions or input on the agenda. This section will allow a person who is recognized only at the beginning of the business meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item, following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? All right, seeing none, we'll close input on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Londo. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent. Seeing no dissent, motion carries.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items: minutes of the regular meeting held February 7, 2022; minutes of the study session held February 7, 2022; approval of minutes of the closed study session held February 7, 2022; approval of requests from Jangland High School, 36105 Marquette, to conduct a graduating class of 2022 parade on Saturday, May 21, 2022, from 11:55 a.m. until approximately 1:30 p.m. Approval of bid for golf course maintenance service for a one-year period with an option to renew for an additional two years. The administration recommended the low bidder links at Gateway LLC at an annual cost not to exceed $155,000. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the contract as approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of agreements associated with the city of Westland becoming a participating partner of the New Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund program to provide mortgage and utility assistance to eligible Michigan homeowners. Introduction of Ordinance 253A and ordinance to amend Section 2-705 of the Westland City Code to allow for electronic bidding. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of budget amendments through December 31, 2021, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Moving to new business. Item one, approval of attorney recommendation regarding S. Davison's workers' compensation matter.
Support.
I got a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries.
New business. Item two, approval of voucher.
Support.
Motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent. Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It's a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
Good evening. Emily Baumann. First, I just want to say I had a really great time on Friday, for those who went, and to the Hockey Night, thank you, Hockey Night at Westland. And this is the second time I've been going. I know I'm hearing it is eight years now. It is a really, what, nine? Sorry, 11? No. It was a really great event, and I just, for those who were able to go in the city, I hope, you really should go. It was just really, it's a lot, a lot of fun, especially if you like hockey. And I will say that we actually went for the open skate on Sunday, so it got us back into the rink to do some open skating, and so that was a lot of fun with my whole family. One question I have, and I've been thinking about this, and I feel like I've said something about this, but maybe I didn't, is when, when there's a consent calendar, I realize I can call each one of you and say, what's going on with this? I have a question about this. Can you tell me a little bit more about this? But I actually come to the city council meetings really hoping that maybe, and I shouldn't say hoping, I'm going to ask, that there be some conversation, there be some discussion, instead of just automatically approving everything, especially on the consent calendar. Obviously, in the regular agenda, there's usually always discussion about something on there, but the consent calendar, sometimes, is just a little bit, a little bit of information coming back to us from when you're sitting there and out to the people that are listening, those of us are here, because again, I can call about every little thing. I've got many questions. But sometimes it's really is a course of doing business, and I get that, but sometimes it's also really helpful for people to just say, this is what's going on, this is why we're not, there's no problem with this, this is why we're just going to go with this, and sometimes it is something that's a little bit, a little bit more than just normal business, but it does fall on the consent calendar. For some reason, it fell on the consent calendar. And I just, I'm going to ask that of you, just to, maybe in education, I've got my kids with me today, learn a little bit more. I'm hoping they're going to bring some information back to their debate club on Friday when we go. I went to city council. And I would, I'm just going to ask that that be something that maybe you offer to the residents, because I think it would be good for us to have more awareness of some of the things that we're seeing on the consent calendar. I don't have anything specific questions on it. I really don't right now. I would have set this up earlier, but in general, there's been a few times where I'm like, wow, I guess I should have called ahead and asked that question. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, on my left. Yes.
Good evening, council. I know we have a, we're in the season of free thaw, but Julius Between Hanover and Dancy was just paved maybe six to seven years ago. It is now Henry Ruff. It is bad, real bad. Henry Ruff at Van Born, I don't think the city is responsible, but when they did the construction down at Middlebelt and Van Born, and the heavy trucks were coming through, they tore all that. It is just, the surface is just destroyed. It's like that wall, but with big giant sinkholes now. Merriman, don't try it. I had to take, I had to take Van Born to Vinoy, north to Cherry Hill, to come back to Merriman, to go to the Chase Bank. That's how I have to travel. We have to put in extra time because you have to go around in a circle. It's horrible down there. So if, by chance, Chief Jerusalem, your people are down there, and they see somebody swerving, don't think they drunk. If you had that power, I'd put you on it. Poor Chief Morris, if you have a run down there, I hope you got a hydroplane or something, get air bubbles on the bottom that's going to carry you over that. So if something could be, I know you can't do it immediately, but look into it immediately. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody on my right? Ray.
Go Ray here. I was there one year today, and Ray is on the go, constantly on the go, and I was at Jefferson Barnes, and I had a meeting, because I love this book. It gets everything about Westland, from the police department to the fire, to, it's really good information. It's a, it's a very, very good resource. Anyway, it looks like the two K-9 guys are on there. I'm always proud of them guys out there working, and the police department's doing a great job, too. So is the fire department. So once in a while, I gotta give you guys a recognizing there. Anyway, according to the cross point, I was at my last meeting, and I was at a meeting Sunday, we were talking, they're talking about boots on the ground, and we're calling ourselves missionaries out there, giving out. So I'm on this reach out thing for people with disabilities, too. So far, it's, it's looking good, reaching out, and we're continuing. We're having another meeting coming up, I believe, again next month. So I also want to make awareness of Disability Awareness Month coming up in March. I'll be up here talking about it. It's very important to me. And anyway, I'm also, this got renewed for the Disability Concern Board, and that is my passion, and I will keep driving the system, making it better, making it more. Everyone is welcome, and that's exactly the way I look at it. I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my left? Sure.
Good evening, council. Stephen Thomas, Westland, Michigan. Since it's Black History Month, I have a little black history lesson I'd like to give tonight. We often refer to Dr. Martin Luther King as Dr. Martin Luther King, but he's actually Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. He was a prophet. His speeches were sermons, primarily in churches. His famous speech, we remember, "I Have a Dream," saturated with faith, though. And we all remember the conclusion of that speech, which says, speaks of blacks and whites and Jew and Gentile and Protestant and Catholic, joining hands and singing free at last. However, we forget the earlier words, which are, "I have a dream that one day every valley shall be exalted." That's straight from scripture. "And every hill and every mountain shall be made low." All this is scripture. "The rough places, places will be made plain, and the crooked places will be made straight, and the glory of the Lord shall be revealed, and all flesh shall see it together." This is our hope, and this is a faith that I go back to the South with. With this faith, we shall be able to hew out of the mountain of despair a stone of hope. With this faith, we will be able to transform the jangling discords of our nation into a, into a beautiful symphony of brotherhood. With this faith, we will be able to work together, to pray together, to struggle together, to go to jail together, to stand up for freedom together, knowing that one day we will be free. Back in 1963, when anybody wanted to mark Martin Luther King, the nonviolent movement, they had to fill out what they called a commitment card. This is a commitment card from 1963, and it says, "I hereby pledge myself, my person and body to the nonviolent movement, therefore I will keep the following ten commandments. One, meditate daily on the teachings and life of Jesus. Two, remember always that nonviolent movement seeks justice and reconciliation, not victory. Three, walk and talk in the manner of love, for God is love. Four, pray daily to be used by God in order that all men might be free. Five, sacrifice personal wishes in order that all men might be free. Six, observe with both free and infold the ordinary rules of courtesies. Seven, seek to perform regular services for others and for the world. Eight, refrain from violence of first, of fierce tongue or heart. And nine, strive to be in good spirit and body health. Ten, follow the directions of the movement and of the captain on demonstration." They signed this pledge. I take and seal what I consider.
All right, your time's up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anybody on my right? Anybody on my left? All right, we'll close citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Give me one second.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of brief things. I, too, would like to thank everybody for attending Hockey Night in Westland. It was a great turnout. It was a great event, great game. Councilman Pro Tem Mike Londo did a great job DJing the event, keeping the crowd upbeat. I don't quite remember the score. Usually, we don't do very good against the Red Wings, but I'm pretty sure it was really, really close to the end, but we appreciate everybody that came out to that event. It was a great event. And just one last thing is, I'm going to ask the city attorney to comment on item F on the council agenda, and he can explain what this program does and how our residents can apply for that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fosso?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for the opportunity to talk about the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund that council authorized the city to enter into tonight. The Homeowners Assistance Fund is, was established under the American Rescue Plan of 2021. It's to mitigate financial hardships associated with the pandemic by providing funds to eligible entities for the purpose of preventing homeowner mortgage delinquencies, defaults, foreclosures, utility arrears, home energy services, and displacements of homeowners experiencing financial hardship after January 21st, 2020. This, the state of Michigan has $206 million to spend in this Homeowners Assistance Fund. I'm going to repeat this twice so folks can grab their pencil and look it up. You want to go to the website, michigan.gov/MIHAF, to find out about this program. It is set up and designed that individual homeowners can go to that website and fill out the forms and apply directly through the state portal for this assistance. The assistance may be up to $25,000 per household. It's a significant program with, you know, a lot, a lot of dollars associated to it. You have to qualify for financial hardship by asserting reduction in income or an increase in living expenses. And there is a, again, this form that you fill out on, on site to authorize or get yourself eligible for this. Eligible properties not only include single-family properties but condominium units, one-to-four unit properties where the homeowner is living in one of the units as a primary residence, manufactured homes permanently affixed to real estate and taxed as real estate, and mobile homes not permanently affixed to real property. It does not apply to things like vacant land, second homes, investment properties, those sorts of things. So you'll remember there was a rental assistance program early on. Well, this is the homeowners assistance to, if you will, equalize what homeowners were experiencing during, during this period as well. The, as I mentioned, the maximum amount per household is $25,000. There are a priority of expenses that they will reimburse for. Top is mortgage or housing loan assistance, delinquencies, or land contracts and reverse mortgage delinquencies, property taxes, condominium or homeowner association fees, and on that list includes utilities where a homeowner may be, may be in arrears. And there are different amounts of, of that $25,000 for, depending on the category that's being reimbursed for. So let me again state the address, which is michigan.gov/MIHAF. And this is a program that you should be able to go to that website and fill out yourself. Do not, anytime we see a federal or state program of this size, you know there will be a lot of people trying to scam the system. You do not have to register with anybody or pay anybody to get into the program, and if you get hit up by an organization, well, just pay us $500 and we'll fill this in for you, know that it's a scam. It's not set up that way. It's set up for you to be able to do it directly. So we want to point you again to michigan.gov/MIHAF, and I think it was a very important step for the city tonight to say we're going to get involved in the program, and that was a necessary first step to be able to qualify your residents for this important homeowners assistance program. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Great information. Thank you. We'll begin council comments tonight with Councilman Godbout.
Nothing this evening. Thanks.
All right, we'll move to Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. So I know this evening's meeting was a little bit lighter. I also wanted to say how wonderful it was. I attended the alumni game with about 20 of my family and friends, and it was, it was pretty great to see folks out there, residents. I know that it was on a hiatus, so it was wonderful to see the community back together. The mayor and the city administration did a phenomenal job. I also saw Westland finest out there protecting our celebrity guests, which was great, from all the pictures and autographs. Councilman Londo did a really great job also for his in-arena hosting. And I also know that we had a lot of repeat sponsors, so North Brothers, Plant Marianne, Don Nicholson Enterprises, Wayne Ford Civic League, but then we also attracted some new sponsors, so Nolley Com Improvements, they're brand new to the city from a sponsorship perspective, so they were really excited to get involved, and there's a few others, too, that I think after they saw the event, were really interested in being involved. So it's always good when we can attract new sponsorships to the city. So with that being said, I also wanted to point out COVID cases are going down, so the city of Westland is stopping the operations for the COVID testing outside. So if you are interested in getting a COVID test, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, they have a hotline. I have a personal Facebook page, Melissa, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, you can look it up. I'll put the information on there. And then I know Lori addressed this already about the road conditions, which I agree with you. I just think a reminder for those at home that are watching, if you see potholes and anything that needs to be fixed, you can download the Westland Click and Fix app in the App Store. You can report the damage, and then it will open a ticket. So that's something from a reminder perspective that is always great to, to document, because a lot of people don't realize it. Recently, I downloaded it and started putting in my work orders, too. So wanted to plug that. Lastly, and I'm sorry if I'm reading this, because this was just printout. Apparently, it was sent to my email, and it didn't come through, so it was printout and kind of left for me. But I was speaking with Jody Berry, who is in charge of this Distinguished Young Women program, and I'm really supportive of this. Anytime that we can get our youth involved and recognize, especially the opportunity to win cash scholarships, this is something that I believe can be, I think, up to, what her email said, I'm so sorry. It says, incoming students five years up to now can register. So, but it's specifically for class of 2023. The program evaluates participants and provides awards and scholarships in five categories, so scholastics, interview, talent, fitness, and self-expression. And again, they are expanding it. So previously, they had just Westland, but they are opening it up to Westland and other areas of Wayne County. So if this program is something that you're interested in, I can put this on my personal page, but also I will say that you can go to www.waincounty.mi.distinguishyw.org. So I will put this out, like I said, but I wanted to share this because I think the program's very worthy. A lot of young women come through the program and do great things. It builds self-confidence and prepares them for kind of the next step in the. It builds self-confidence and prepares them for kind of the next step in their career and rewards them and teaches them a lot of great qualities. So again, I just wanted to share that, and I hope that everyone has a safe two weeks, and see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I'll try to keep it as brief as I can possibly here. Like my colleagues and some of our audience members and residents have stated, Hockey Night was a success and a blast, and I think it's very important that we recognize what Hockey Night is about. So part of it's about bringing our residents together and enjoying the camaraderie of hockey and getting to see some of the alumni. But really, what Hockey Night does is to help support the Mike Madonna Arena. And so that's one of our spotlight recreation areas in the city. And besides just the programming that we offer there with the ice skating and the hockey and some of the off-season things, it also had become a hub, a central hub for our city during the COVID crisis. So, you know, we had to maintain that facility, and, you know, so many wonderful things were done to improve that facility. And so anybody who participated in that or sponsored it or attended, you know, should feel really good because you sponsored a really important monument and landmark of our city. And we'll just all hope that we don't have to use it for non-athletic purposes in the future. I wanted to say thank you, and I know I'm piggybacking a little bit on you, to our DPS department, because there was such a marked difference, remarkable difference, between the roads that our DPS department took care of during the last snowfall and, I will say it, the county roads. They were terrible. They're absolutely terrible. So, you know, just so that you at home know, Cherry Hill, Eccles, Farmington, Ford, Hannan, Inkster, Joy, Merriman, Michigan Avenue, Middle Belt, Van Born, Vinoy, except for the little sliver between Warren and Cowan, Warren Road and Wayne Road are all county roads. It's the county's responsibility to keep those clear. It's the county's responsibility to salt them, and it's the county's responsibility to fill the potholes. So I'm going to ask you, if you're driving on those roads and the conditions aren't great, or you come across a canyon, you need to reach out and you need to make a phone call, and we're going to all do it, too. So call 1-800-Road-Crew. So, or not 800, 888, sorry. You know, we might need to be the squeaky wheel a little bit and get the county over to us. I know they have 150 vehicles, and some of the surrounding areas weren't very clear either, but, you know, that's a lot of roads in our city that, you know, prevent us from carrying on our day-to-day activities. So again, the city roads, DPS, very good. County roads, leave something to be desired. Merriman Road, now it's a different part of the Merriman. The bridge is scheduled to be repaired. It's been in discussion for like the last two years. Hopefully, it won't fall down before they get to it, because it's bad right now. I almost lost my car in it. But we're going to rattle their cage a little bit on the whole stretch of Merriman. Obviously, it's, you know, they need to do something. The cold patch isn't doing it, and it's just not working with our winter weather here. So with that, I will say good night, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilwoman McDermott.
Well, good evening, and, you know, just want to echo the sentiments that all my colleagues said. I think we were all in attendance at the Hockey Night in Westland event, really a fabulous event in support of the Mike Madonna Ice Arena. So thank you to everybody who came out in the city. Thank you to the mayor and the administration for getting the event together and getting, you know, Dave Coulier and some of the Red Wings alum, John O'Rourke, and, you know, others out there. It was cool to see Murph, so to see Larry Murphy out there. It's been a minute since we've seen him on Fox Sports Detroit, so it was nice to see Murph out there as well. And, you know, the Red Wings are an up-and-coming team and could always use some veteran help on the blue line, so to have Murph out there, maybe Stevie Y wants to give him a call. But, you know, thank you again to the administration and everybody for making it a great event, to Councilwoman Londo for emceeing the event, as always, as he's done, I think, all 12 years?
Eight years.
Eight years, okay. Well, thank you for the work doing that. It was a great event. The other thing that happened just a couple of weeks before Hockey Night in Westland, and I can't remember if we talked about this at the last council meeting or not, so I'm going to acknowledge it again, was the William D. Ford Technical Center. All, pretty much everybody up here, all my colleagues were out in support of the school district and skilled trade learning at the William D. Ford Technical Center open house, and it really was a fantastic event. We got to see and really dive into what the kids are doing in the school district from a hands-on skilled trade perspective. You know, Lord knows someone like me, you wouldn't want me working on your car, your water heater, because it ain't going to work after that. But we have a shortage in this state, in this country, of skilled trades, and we need more people doing plumbing and electrical work and building and carpentry and IT and police officers and firefighters. So it was really great to see the school district put on that open house and see all the incredible work that the kids are doing over there at the William D. Ford Technical Center. And if you ever have a chance to check it out in the future, I would highly recommend it, because there's a lot of great work that's going on. And I live, you know, right down the street from the VOTAC houses that are on Avondale, and they do a great job building the VOTAC houses. So really great work going on in the district, and thank you to all my colleagues again for coming out to that open house there. As Councilwoman Rakowski mentioned, our roads are in disgraceful condition. She already gave out the number for the 888 Road Crew. I do have an update that both Mayor Wild and Commissioner Anderson shared with me. On the Merriman Road Bridge, it looks like they're going to do some construction this summer. They're slated to. We'll see, hopefully, things stay normal and we don't get hit with God knows what, and they're able to get to that work. But it does sound like it's on target for sometime this summer for the Merriman Road Bridge. It sounds like both of them, the one that's going over Heinz and then the other one that's nearby there, so it looks like we may be getting some work done there in the future. I wanted to thank Mr. Thomas for bringing up, you know, Dr. King. I think, you know, as we close out Black History Month, it's important to reflect on Dr. King, and not just his I Have a Dream speech. For me, one of my favorite speeches is one that he gave six months before his assassination to a group of middle and high school kids in Philadelphia. It was at Barrett Junior High School, and it's called his Life's Blueprint speech. And in that speech, he really lays out, you know, what is your life's blueprint? What do you want your life to be? What do you want your life to be like? Where do you, what kind of future do you, as, and he was obviously speaking to an audience of young black and brown boys who, in the 1960s, a future for a young black and brown individual was not what it was today. And his message was, you know, keep fighting, because what do you want your life to look like? What do you want the possibilities to be? How do you want your life's blueprint to be shaped? And if you have the chance, it's about, I think, a 25-minute speech that he gave to the students. It's a really spectacular speech. I know that, we all know his I Have a Dream speech. It's been commonly quoted and cited, but his Life's Blueprint speech to the students at Barrett Junior High School in Philadelphia, given, again, just six months before his assassination, was really an incredible speech, and I would encourage everybody, it's on YouTube, to take the time to watch it. The other thing in regards to, you know, closing out Black History Month, I think one of the best things that we can do right now more than ever is stand up for voting rights and the right to vote for every American, every background, every ethnicity, every race, no matter where you live. We want to make sure that everybody is enfranchised at the ballot box, and so it is important that we lean on our elected officials, all of us and those above us in the state and in Congress, to protect the right to vote for every single American. I think that is so crucially important, and I think it is a great way to close out Black History Month, to really highlight the importance of the right to vote and how you can lean on your elected representatives to protect and expand the enfranchisement of voting for all Americans. And then congratulations to this year's winner of the Blood Drive, the Fire Department, and also congratulations to the Police Department. It is quite impressive to see 32 units of blood that were ultimately donated. It's going to help save a lot of lives, and so we certainly appreciate all you do every day for us, but the little extra mile that both the PD and the Fire Department do every day here in the community, it doesn't go unnoticed. And, you know, we've really got the best and bravest serving us here in Westland, and events like this, the Blood Drive, really highlight that. And then the last thing that I do want to say here is, Ray, congratulations on your reappointment. As always, tireless work and advocacy for people who are differently abled and people with brain health issues and mental illness. You know, it doesn't go unnoticed by all of us, but, you know, just well-deserved on being reappointed, and we look forward to being able to work with you here again. And as always, if anybody has any questions or concerns, you can follow me on my personal Facebook page at Councilman Mike McDermott, and you can give me a call at 734-890-2146, anytime, day or night, but 2:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Pro Tem Londo.
Thanks, Council President. I also want to echo my colleagues as far as the response from our Department of Public Service for everything they did during this most recent snowfall. Thanks to the whole team, including, you know, the directors and Michael, or Deputy Chief, Chief of Staff, excuse me, Michael Reedy, for putting a good plan together and executing it, and obviously keeping the council updated on the updates. Real quick, I want to thank and wish again, one of the young men in the audience, Karik, it's his birthday, or was his birthday over the weekend. I announced it at the hockey game. Has everyone heard I was announcer? And this young man brought me a thank you card, so thank you for acknowledging me on that. I appreciate it, and hope you had a great birthday. A few weeks ago, we had a tour at the YMCA. I talked about it at the last council meeting that we were going to be touring it. Majority of the council was able to attend. When I say the YMCA, I'm talking about the Southgate facility, which is one of the more regional, modern facilities out there. So we were able to split up in groups, two or three at a time, to walk through the facility with the mayor from Southgate and also Mayor Wild and some of his staff, and then the YMCA directors and programming people. So I was very impressed. I was excited to go out there. I toured it with Councilwoman Sampe and Councilwoman Rakowski, and I couldn't get a word in, which is kind of shocking when I can't get a word in. They had absolutely great questions, and that's very impressive. But no, we asked all the right questions, and I know there's some more follow-up to do with that, but we appreciate the time and for them for having us. Also, last week, we had a economic development strategy session that went really well. We were able to do that joint session with our DDA and TIFA. For those that don't know what those stand for, it's the Downtown Development Authority, which is a taxing jurisdiction here in Westland, and then the Tax Increment Finance Authority. So a lot of information was covered here. I've got a whole packet here. Haven't been able to digest the entire packet, but it's incredible information and something good to look back on. A lot of exciting stuff upcoming, so more to come on that. Hockey Night in Westland, I'll echo everyone as well, great time. We say it every year, but we really think this was the best year. We had a star-studded cast on both sides. I mean, not just the Red Wings, but, you know, Mayor Wild was playing, and he had his son, Luke, playing, who scored a goal. You had Meltdown, who's on the Rift, the Rock Station 101 WRF. You had M.L. Elrich, who's on the Free Press. You had Councilman from Livonia, Brandon McCullough, and many others. I don't want to leave everybody out, but it was a great time. I really think it was a great event, so thank you to everyone that either helped plan it, attended it, sponsored it. If you missed anything, you can obviously see it on our YouTube channel or on WLND Cable. Thank you to them. They're out there long, long hours. Again, I always say it, long hours before we get there setting up and long hours after we leave, tearing everything down, so thank you to them. And then lastly, I want to talk real quick about the neighborhood grants. We haven't talked much about this publicly. We did pass it in the fiscal budget for this year. And what that is, if everyone wants more information, I'm going to read briefly about it, but you can go right to our homepage at cityofwestland.com to read all about it. And what that is, the neighborhood grant program was established by the Westland City Council to encourage residents to work collaboratively, excuse me, to foster a sense of community and actively participate in making improvements to their neighborhood. What we're doing with these neighborhood grants is we're giving out a maximum of up to $500 per neighborhood grant for a community project or event that supports community involvement that reflects positively on the entire city. What are some examples? Community art programs, community events, maybe a neighborhood-type parade, public space landscaping or beautification, stewardship of neighborhood parks and common spaces, youth programs, such as the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Westland Youth Athletic Association, meaning a project that they put together. If you want more information, again, you can go right on our homepage, cityofwestland.com. Thank you to the IT Department and the Cable Department for getting that out. There is an application deadline, and that application deadline is April 30th. And we'll hopefully announce at the very first meeting in May who was awarded these grants. Again, you can complete an online application or pick one up in person right here at City Hall. And I think that's it with do with that, and I appreciate everyone's time tonight, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks here.
Thank you. Begin my comments by thanking Council President Pro Tem Londo for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Consent calendar, so consent calendar is a standard procedure found in any Robert's Rules of Order, and what it does is allows routine items or obvious items to go through so that the council can go ahead and approve those in one fell swoop. Okay? At any time, as we're always invited, the public to kind of jump up and say if you have any question on the consent calendar. And I'm pretty confident in knowing that if you ask for something to be pulled off the consent calendar, one of my esteemed colleagues will be more than happy to make that motion and have it supported to move. Also, it's important to know that on the website, where you find the agenda, is the entire packet. So every single item that we actually discuss, all the supporting documentation for that item is right there in there. So if you ever want to look at a consent calendar item, you had a question about it, just like any other agenda item, it's right there. So you can find all the information you want, and as the resident said, you can always call one of us, too. So you have those options to us, but it does create a mechanism for routine items to move through and have an efficient meeting, because what it's my job to run an efficient and orderly meeting, and doing smart consent calendar items is part of that procedure, and has been a longstanding best practice, not only here but everywhere. So if you have any more questions on consent calendar items, I'm sure to, happy to address them, but all the information and data is always available for you. With regards to roads, Councilwoman Rakowski brought it up really good. She had one misstep, I think Ford Road is a state road? So, but all the rest of those?
A non-city road.
Yeah, a non-city road. And I get this a lot, too, where I get phone calls about these Brandex roads, these non-city owned roads that have all these problems, and, you know, I try to address it as softly as I can. I don't ever want to say, not my road, not my problem, you know, but the truth of it is, is you pay your taxes every year, okay? And if you look at how that breaks down, you'll be surprised at how small the city piece of that is compared to other parts, like the school board and the county. So you've already paid the county to maintain that road, and it's their responsibility to maintain that road. It's not because we don't want to do it. I don't want to bill you twice. It'd be pretty, wouldn't be a fiduciary responsibility for us as an administration and a city to let you pay your county taxes for them to maintain the road, and then we use our resources to fix that road because it didn't get fixed in the appropriate time. I will tell you unofficially, or officially, but unofficially, that there has been times I have called DPS on a county road and say, hey, there's a big chunk of rock in the middle of this road. Can you leave somebody out to go grab it? I think we can do that, but we can't do is actually take repairs on the roads. I think we'll actually get into trouble with the county by touching their roads. It's a much bigger issue than our reluctance to do it. There's legal issues that prevent us from doing that. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that. We're not trying to pass the buck. We're really telling you that legally, we cannot fix county or state-owned roads. There's a big problem if we do, and it'll cause a big problem for us. So I want to make sure that was clear. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, for coming up and speaking about Dr. and Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. He's always been a man that I have idolized and held in the most highest regard. And as we close Black History Month, one thing that I've really told my children in moving forward is, black history is American history, and it's important that we understand that. There's people in our history who are black, and that's what we use as February to recognize black history, but mentally, we have to understand that black history is American history and is part of this country and who we are. So, and I thank you for bringing that up, and I thank you for mentioning him. I just want to make sure I'm going through. Neighborhood grants, please, please, please participate. The council as a whole came together last budget cycle to kind of get this thing approved, and it took us a little while to put all the pieces together, but we do. And I think you're going to see some really cool programming coming out soon on WLND. We're going to promote that. So you might see a couple of my colleagues on TV more than what you normally do, but they're going to be able to tell you about this program. Please participate. These are funds that the council has set aside for you guys, just like my colleague, Councilman Londo, has said, for you to do things in your community, be that a parade. But also, I mean, we have visions, too, like, just an example, neighborhood cul-de-sacs reserves the island in the middle. You want to landscape that, and you and your neighbors want to do something, apply for it, you know, and we'd be happy to go ahead and approve that as long as we can get it approved, you know? All depends how many people apply. But if you don't use it, you lose it, right? So it'll just fall out, right? So please use it, please apply. Please give our administration, the council, and the clerks some work to do so that we can go through those applications. We would appreciate it. Last, oh, William D. Ford, wanted to touch on that, too, and I usually don't talk this much, but you guys brought up some good stuff. So the skilled trades program at William D. Ford is nothing short of fantastic. This is something that did not exist, you know, 10 years ago. When I graduated high school, it was a very dogmatic approach. Go to college, go to college, go to college, go to college. And that drum was being beaten even when my son graduated in 2015. It was really, it was really, it was college or nothing, college or nothing. And now we're seeing the results of what we've done, where we have no skilled trades. I'm proud to say my daughter's part of the skilled trades program at William D. Ford. I'm proud to say that she's pursuing her dream of becoming a firefighter, so we're really excited, we're really excited for her, and we're all behind her 100%, but, I mean, she is so thrilled, too. And I'll tell you that, I mean... And I'll tell you that, I mean, parents at home, if you're listening, grandparents at home, if you're listening, get ahold of your high school-aged children in the district and let them know there's a lot of opportunities, because my daughter did not really enjoy the dogmatic academic schedule, okay? She found the skilled trades program, and it's a night-and-day student now. She just, she loves going to school, she loves what she does, and it's very exciting for her, and we're going to produce, you know, the skilled trades of the future. And this is how you do it. This is our chance, right here. So please, take advantage of that program, learn all the programs they have. They even have a Cisco Certified Network Associate class in there. For any of you techie people, a CCNA is an $80,000 to $100,000 job. If you have a CCNA, you're making some money. And the William D. Ford program is standing up a segment just for Cisco certification. So it's phenomenal. If these opportunities weren't available when I went to high school, I had to join the military and spend 15 years to try and figure out how to do it, and we're doing it for our children now, and that's how we're going to make the difference. So please, I can't beat that drum anymore. I'm so thankful to them for that. Last item, so last week, it was brought up about the council supporting the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association and being pulled into the Wayne Westland School District. So as we all know, the city has no influence over the school district, it's its own government. But I think we are all staunchly supportive of that. There's no reason why I feel if the community of Westland, tax-paying residents, want to be part of the Westland School District and take advantage of the William D. Ford program I just mentioned, I'm a strong supporter of it. I'll write a letter in support of it. But even more good news is I know that the mayor took charge of this thing, and he went and reached out to the superintendent. So there is a meeting coming up soon where the mayor is going to take initial pass with the school superintendent and get the ball rolling, and it's my understanding the school superintendent is just as excited as we are. So it's a process, it's already moving, we're just standing back, shaking the pom-poms, and really excited for it. So anything you need from us, we're happy to write a letter, but I don't think it's necessary. I think all the stakeholders are pretty excited about making that opportunity available for our residents. So thank you, and thank you, and thank you for bringing that up. Very much appreciative. And I think this is the longest I've talked in an awful long time. Congratulations to the PD for, or, excuse me, for fire. I know, I know, I know. Got to break the habit. Chief Morris, congratulations to all you guys.